Good evening. I would like to bring the June 22, 2016 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call? Please, Ms. Colwell.
Ms. Foyle?
Here.
Mr. Chivon?
Here.
Mr. McGarvey?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Could we have the invocation and the pledge here, Mr. Evans, sir? I would like to congratulate our elected junior board representative for 2016-17, Ariana Worthis, and the Memorial Day and Veterans Recognition. Yes, Dr. Ekman?
Greetings, community members, school board, staff, and most especially, our veterans. My name is Valerie Ekman, and I serve as the curriculum director for the Interboro School District. Indeed, Interboro is a proud community with an abundant history. Many men and women who have served our country are part of the rich fabric of our community. Some walk humbly among us today, standing in front of us in the line at Ekme, next to us cheering on the Bucks, Mark Chingbien, and football team, making small talk with us as we wait for morning coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, teaching and guiding our children in the classrooms. Others have left their hometown to serve our country and have laid down their lives for our freedom. In order to fully embrace what it means to be an American and appreciate the freedoms that we have today, it is quite critical for our elementary and secondary students to engage in hands-on research and community service events that cultivate a sense of citizenship and connect the past with the present. Our efforts in these areas continue to grow, and we are proud to share with the community and our veterans present tonight some of the rewarding experiences in which our young citizens engaged over the course of this spring semester. These experiences include a Memorial Day research contest facilitated in our middle school social studies classrooms, the Flags in Project, which is quickly becoming a tradition in the community, attendance at and participation in the Walk for Wounded Warriors, and learning much from Vietnam veterans who presented at the Interboro High School. We are privileged to engage in such experiences, and thank you for your service. I would like to invite Ms. Alexis Corcoran, who is a rising 11th grader, hailing from Glen Olden, to come down. And if you would all rise, Alexis is going to honor the veterans here tonight with the singing of the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming! And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there! Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Oh, the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Excellent, excellent job, Alexis. That was very moving indeed. We will now have a brief presentation that recognizes all of the work that our students and our faculty did throughout this spring semester.
Thank you very much. It's not easy to follow such a beautiful performance and then a wonderful presentation like that. I'd rather be opening for them than have to follow that. But I'm Bob Kelly, principal of Prospect Park School, and we're here tonight to recognize this effort, this joint effort between our district and the American Legion, the VFW, and the work of Pat Quinn. Thank you very much. But before I move on to our introductions and presentations, I just want to say thank you to these men. I know I'm principal of Robert Kelly right now. In a previous life, I was IS-2 Robert Kelly, United States Navy, with the Office of Naval Intelligence. And I can just say, with my experiences, I know sacrifices that have to be made with deployments and being away from home and families. And not only did these fine men give of their time when they were younger in the service, but they chose, after giving to their country, to come home and serve their communities as members of the American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign War. So I just want to say thank you, gentlemen. First up, representing the Norwood Post, American Legion Post 507, Vice Commander Gary Quinn. And Tony Perry. Tony here? Tony? Representing the Norwood VFW Post 7213 in Prospect Park, former commander of the post and the architect of our flag-in ceremony, Jim Harrell. And Jack Loby. And Jack Loby here? Loby? My apologies.
Awesome. In another life, I was A-1C Engel, United States Air Force. So I too, you know, definitely echo the thanks for everyone that has served. We would like to introduce at this time, Mr. Stephen Bell, the finance officer of American Legion Post 566, Glen Olden. And Mr. George Cox will be representing Tinnicum Township, VFW Post 4845. At this time, we would like to call Mr. Quinn back up to the mic with Mr. Chris Owens, a representative from Nick Micorelli's office. Unfortunately, State Representative Micorelli was unable to attend due to a budget meeting.
Good evening, everyone. In a minute, we'll present a trophy. First, I'm sure everybody thought I'd not have to speak tonight due to all the fine work that we saw so far tonight, the pictures, the song. And first of all, I'd just like to thank Bernadette Riley, our superintendent. Bernadette, stand up for a minute. Bernadette has been such an advocate of our kids and the school district and honoring our veterans. I just can't say enough about it. And Dr. Ekman, will you stand up as well, Dr. Ekman? And Rosemary Reese is Dr. Ekman's assistant, and she also has done a huge amount of work. Again, we couldn't pull this together if it wasn't for the school district and, of course, our communities as well. As you gentlemen know, we've been up in front of all four boroughs and townships, and the work everybody has done is just tremendous. And I just want to, I mean, Dr. Ekman had such a great presentation there, but I just want to read her parts of it. Jim, who was the architect of our flag-in ceremony, and Jim dragged me into it a couple years ago, so I'm not really saying thank you, Jim. Every year, he throws the challenge of doing even more flags, so he's probably going to tell us next year fifty thousand, for all I know. But I just can't speak enough about all the posts, and I know you folks and some other members that couldn't be here tonight, Boy Scout leaders have coached and reffed, and the list of just what you do in our communities, as well as being officers and folks in the VFWs and the American Legions, because our communities would not be the same without you, so thank you. And with that said, what we're going to do now is we're going to present a trophy now. As everybody knows, the Memorial Day parades this year did not go off as planned. We did do the flag-in, and I will say that the veterans did show up at a number of sites and put out flags and memorials, and I did have a number of kids that showed up for that. I had kids that showed up for the flag-in. I had busloads of the kids from the high school doing their senior project, and a busload of kids from Tinnicum. So, you know, all in all, we had all the kids in the grade schools, got up there, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They did posters and thank you notes and essays, which were in these binders. I would hope that you folks would share these in your post for this year, share it with your members, let them see that we all do care in our communities. As we mentioned, Representative Micorelli is in a budget meeting, which probably will give a chuckle to a few folks here on the board tonight, because I know they'll be doing budgets as well. Chris Owens is one of the staff members, Mr. Micorelli. And let me just read out the first part, and then Chris can read out the rest of it. This is given out every year to the community school that participates the most in our school district. "Interboro School District Memorial Day Parade Competition: Honoring Our Veterans Least We Forget." Again, it's just a trophy, but it represents what we in our communities think about the veterans. And Chris, you can read out the winner?
Okay. And this year, it was going to all four Interboro Community Grade Schools.
And there's a stir behind that again, and that is, that is, since we did not have the parades and our kids got involved with the flag-in and they did all the essays and whatnot, we thought, instead of not presenting the trophy, it would still be worth it to honor all our grade schools and the people involved with them. So I think Steph, Steph, come on up, and Mr. Kelly, come on up. As mentioned, these two folks were veterans, are veterans, and also in our school district and do a tremendous job. And I'd just like to mention, Steph has been dragging kids around doing all this for a number of years. So let's present the trophy. I'll have you present it. Folks, will just stay here for one second?
Okay. Absolutely. Okay, on behalf of the representative, I apologize for him not being here tonight. Obviously, everybody knows what's going on in Harrisburg with the budget being due to be finished at the end of the month. But they did send a citation down from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania House of Representatives. "Whereas the Interboro School District encourages their students to attend and participate in activities and celebrations held in honor of those who paid the ultimate price in service to our nation on Memorial Day, on the Memorial Day holiday. And whereas the Interboro School District has sponsored competitions in the past to see which student body amongst their schools could have the highest participation rate in a goal to help foster patriotism and to inspire their students to become more civically engaged in their communities. And whereas Interboro School District has noticed an increase in participation and civic engagement throughout each of the district's individual schools. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania extends their gratitude to the students and staff of the Interboro School District for honoring our nation's deceased veterans, heartedly recognizes their exemplary accomplishments, and offers best wishes for continued success. And directs that a copy of this citation, sponsored by the honorable Nick Micorelli, on June 22, 2016, be transmitted to the superintendent Bernadette Riley to accept on behalf of the Interboro School District."
Thank you so much. On behalf of the board and the district, I would like to thank Pat, Nick Micorelli, and our veterans for their support. I come from a family of veterans. My father is a World War II vet. My nephew is a retired Army Ranger, and my brother is retired from the Navy. So I come from a long history, and I know the time and dedication and sacrifices that all of our servicemen and women have made, you know, for our freedom here in this country. So I thank you for that, for all your work, and also for administrators here who have served our country and now work for us here in Interboro, so we're very proud of that. Pat, we could not do this without you. Every year, you come through and you get our kids on board, and you really bring our community together, and we could not do this without you. So I thank you for the time and effort that you put into community project, you know, it's nonstop, and I mean that in a good way, because you really want to get our kids engaged in the community, and we appreciate that. So thank you so much for all that you do on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Can you veterans come on up for a minute? We're going to get a picture. I'm going to have these guys take pictures, and I'll send it to you. My poor daughters went to Interboro, and now I wrapped them into all these projects, and no matter what I say, you're going to come and do it, pictures, whatever it takes. Anyway, once again, I want to thank the board, Bernadette, and Valerie, and especially veterans. Again, we mean it sincerely. You make our communities. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ekman, for that presentation. It was very nice. Moving on to number three, public comments, Mr. Evans. Is there anyone on the list?
Yes, we have Mr. Zerdi Dobie.
Zerdi Dobie, Tinnicum. Number 23, which is a contract for the SEIU. What are the, is there any increase in the pay for this group? And what is it?
Yes, there is, Mr. Dobie. I'm not sure of the exact percentages, but we can get that for you.
Okay. So just for future reference, you should be putting this in your motions. I mean, it's not, it's something you're going to do, so, you know, to eliminate a person having to come up here and ask you what you're giving in increases, you should put it in there. I mean, it's not that much more ink. Number 13-1 and 13-2, which are board actions, and you have salaries listed for 13-1, you have administrators, status quo, next line administrators, next line supervisors, next line custodians. Now, so how is the administrators divided? What is that division there?
There are certain contracts that haven't been settled yet, that they will be status quo until they are.
Okay. Now, last month, you passed the Act 93, which is the administrators. So are you saying that there are still administrators within this Act 93 group that have not had and are under status quo? Or is this a different group of or number of administrators?
This is, if I'm not mistaken, it's Mr. Criscola and Mr. High School that are status quo.
Okay. And they're not part of the Act 93? Okay. That's, that's, under number 13.2, the secretaries, you have three different sections for secretaries listed, and it's all status quo. Now you, so this is that you don't have the contract with them. There is no contract with them, so it's status quo with that group. Is that correct?
Not yet, we do. We are working on it.
Right. But that's why it's status quo, because you have no contract with them. So now, back to the number 11, and just a couple of comments on this. Again, I bring to your attention the fact that you're going to have an increase in taxes, and you're having furloughs, which are mentioned in this budget. Your failure to go forward to recover the money from the, to renegotiate with the county and the township to recover more than $800,000 of that money is something that would probably address a lot of the issues regarding those people who are losing their jobs. And your failure to do that on this is, needs to be addressed, and you need to go forward and look into it. You know, you just sit there, last night, you had a lot of discussion, last month, you had a lot of discussion. Mr. Evans, in his comments about the budget, talked about that there were, everything goes up every year. Things go up. Well, that's not true. And every one of you sat there and allowed that to go forward. Now, this is from Tinnicum Township in Mr., my representative's district. This is a home that was purchased in 2010 for $165,000. It is currently on the market for $85,900. So the loss, so things are not always going up, and our taxes are going up, and your loss refusal to address the recovery of the money. Superintendent Riley was asked, gave at the budget meeting, talking about recovering money from students who did not reside in the district but were terminated from having, receiving the service of education. So did you receive any money yet back from any of the people who you sought that?
We're still working on that, Mr. Dobie.
Still working on it. So that's maybe, may be in the thousands or tens of thousands of dollars if you recover it. I'm talking about recovering from the township and the county more than $800,000. That's what you need to address, and it should be done sooner than later, because what you're going to have, the problems you're having now are going to continue next year. You already said that at the last night's meeting. So, thank you.
First of all, I'm going to comment on Mr. Dobie's comment, as I did last night. None of you are failing our students because of that airport agreement, nor the previous board. And yes, Mr. Dobie, I was on that board, and I was part of that agreement. However, you don't understand, obviously, when there is an agreement, good, bad, or indifferent, once it's signed, it's a legal document, it's a contract, and like anything else, three parties are involved. So all three parties have to agree to reopen, or like we call it here, with our unions, an MOU. And that means the county and the township would have to be in agreement to open it. So you making it sound like the board, the district, did something wrong, or the board can change this. No, we're one of three entities. So therefore, you constantly bringing this up is not going to change anything unless you, instead of coming here, go to the county or to the township and ask them to agree to renegotiate. Until that happens, it's not going to happen. Until that happens, it's not going to happen. And we cannot afford the legal expense to do what you think we should do, because we didn't spend any money on legal fees initially. It was the county, but primarily the township that did. So what we got is more than what we would have gotten, because they fought the fight. So, we have to accept it, appreciate it, and move on. Moving on, our budget, the budget that you're going to approve tonight. I'm going to recommend strongly, as Mr. Eckert pointed out to all of you, when Mr. Phelps made the comment that we have to vote on it tonight, no, you have until June 30th. And the reason why this came up was because there was some last-minute ideas or suggestions that came up, very valid ones. Mr. Harris presented a way that there can be some savings, and we wouldn't have to, you know, raise the taxes to 2.9%. Mr. Eckert made the comment that we need to, next year, start at the low-hanging fruit, I mean, not start at the low-hanging fruit, start at the top. With that said, that's two suggestions that came up that can be worked on between now and June 30th. Because maybe, if their ideas were able to be digested, discussed, understood, it's possible that some of these furloughs might not happen. It's possible things would have a different, a whole different aspect on this budget. The sad part is, and what I was very upset about, is that it took Board members, Mr. Harris and Mr. Eckert, okay, and others that made comments, I'm not going to take away from the other ones. Mr. Chivon, you made a couple of comments as well. The fact is that it's not an easy job. I've been there, 12 years. It's very difficult. This is the worst year ever. But what really upsets me is it took specifically two Board members to come up with comments or suggestions. They're not paid, to my knowledge, they're not accountants. I don't know what their jobs are, as far as, or their experience, as far as doing budgets of $65 million. But the fact of the matter is, our Finance Director and our Superintendent get paid to do this, under the school code, under the state mandate. They are supposed to help you prepare a budget. And when people were upset because last minute, ideas came up, well, you know what? At least up until the last minute, we had Board members that were trying to figure things out, and they did it on their own time, not getting paid. Yes, Mr. Phelps, this started in December, but the Board was not given all the information. And the two top administrators responsible for the budget-
Mrs. Freud, the Board was, everybody on this Board was given the same information.
When did you get the department, each department, line, item, budgets? I'll tell you, April, April's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Freud.
You're welcome. April, you had to come to the meeting, it wasn't even sent to your homes, it wasn't on Board docs for you to read, to digest. April's meeting, it was given to you. So, how can you say the Board was given every opportunity? April, then May, you had to hurry, 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 and come up with the preliminary budget. And here we are, hurry, 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 you have to slam dunk this tonight, when you still have a few days left. Will those days make a difference? Will that change anybody's mind up there that's going to support this budget? I don't know. But neither do any of you, until you have that conversation. And it's really a shame. It is, it is really appalling that Board members are not being listened to. So, some of the people that are being laid off, I'm sorry, the RTIs, the teachers that are RTIs, they help identify the students, they help the teachers show what students need, what work and whatnot. Now, whether or not individual Board members are aware of that, I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, that's an important position. The T1, Mrs. Raleigh was all proud, because she was the one that initiated it.
Mrs. Freud, just so you know, everybody on that list has an important position. That's the feeling of the Board. But we explained the other night why we are doing the cuts that we have to do.
And you're saying everybody on the Board was in agreement with it?
I'm saying that that's the, that's what's being presented tonight.
Yes.
Everybody has a vote, they can vote.
Everybody has a vote, but not everybody had a full understanding of what importance these different people have. So, I just-
Well, they're all important, and all their positions are important.
Yes, they are. But when you have to cut, some more so than others, and, you know, it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense at all. And I really think that each and every one of you should think about the June 30th deadline, and not tonight's deadline. And you should think about what Mr. Harris recommended, and the statement that Mr. Eckert made, because maybe things will have a different outcome. Thank you.
Ms. Sherry Ekman?
First of all, good evening, and I just would like to thank you all for the time and the effort that you put into being on our school Board, as you have full-time jobs. So first of all, I do want to thank each and every single one of you for that. Second of all, unfortunately, I was not able to be at the meeting where a lot of these things were discussed. I'm going to start with the heart of what my concern is, and that is our eighth grade summer math curriculum. I have a son going into eighth grade, and I will tell you right now, last year's seventh grade curriculum for his summer program, going into math, did absolutely positively nothing to help him, unfortunately, with being in math this year. I sat there with my son, we did 60 problems. Some of the answers were wrong in the packet, and that's fine, I understand that. But for my son and I to sit there and do what it is that is required, and other people not do it, and being told as a parent that, well, if he did this, it'll be counted as a grade for him, and those who didn't, it really, it's not going to be added or counted as a grade. That hurts me. Because that summer math packet should not be as it is. As an educator, that summer math packet should not be something that I have to print off of a line. It should be something that is collaborated among all of the teachers, sat down, viewed as the curriculum that's going to be covered for next year, start with prior knowledge, then maybe build onto what is going to come next year. So I am going to ask if maybe we can look at, look at that differently for the future? Because I cannot take the hours away from my son's summer program, when it comes to being able to do real math, or some type of other educational thing, and be told, well, it's only going to be counted as maybe 20% of his grade. I just don't think that's fair. So that's the first thing. That's what I would like to dive into first. The second thing is, I guess I don't understand if, if we're looking at computers as, you know, and technology as something that is the wave of the future, and something that we truly want our kids to get into, because let's be honest, we don't do spelling. You know, there's a lot of things we don't do. We don't do grammar, we don't do sentences, we don't do syntax, we don't do semantics, because, you know, we have the computer. I don't understand why our computer teachers are being cut. I know my son lives for his computer class. I mean, that's what he, he is very well-oriented in computers, he does well in computers, that's something he really does excel at. And to find out next year that it may be replaced with a language, half-year English, half-year French and half-year Spanish, I guess my question is, is that correct for Norwood?
Ms. Ekman, it's an exploratory language program. So the students will be receiving marking period of French, German, Latin, and another period of guidance. So they will be having an exploratory language program.
So where, they won't have computers at all next year?
They will. It'll be, there'll be instructional technology coaches, so the coaches will be pushing into the individual classrooms for different projects and things like that.
Okay. And what is the guidance? What's the-
The guidance will be a marking period of guidance through our school guidance counselors, our school counselors.
Okay. And May, and I don't need, I won't want to take up any of your time, just-
I would be more than happy with you if I could say, if you would like to talk with me after the meeting-
Yes, definitely.
-I'd be more than happy to set up a meeting and talk to you about this and your concerns with the summer math as well.
Yes. And one more thing, I'm sorry, I do want to try and keep it to five minutes, I know we have a lot to cover. I don't understand why we are in such a huge deficit. Like, that is something I really don't understand, and I apologize that I'm not well-prepared and well-versed in many of the other things. But I look at it as we have businesses, and we have, you know, we have businesses, and it's not like we are a rural community by any means, we have lots of businesses, and we have restaurants, and, and I just, I am baffled by the fact that we have such a huge deficit that we have. I don't understand it, I don't, I don't want to judge, prejudge, but what I would like is, at some point, maybe being able to talk to whoever our business administrator is as a concerned person in this community, who does not necessarily feel the need to bash anybody, but wants to be informed, and if, if my taxes need to increase, because you know what, it's going to better the district, then absolutely, increase my taxes. Because the last thing I want is the two ends of our pike coming together in the middle, and I think that's what's going to happen if things don't turn around eventually. We're either going to be Chester, or we're going to be Southeast Stokka. And unfortunately, we've seen some of that happening now. So I do appreciate your time, and I do appreciate you listening to my concerns. And once again, I'd be happy to chat with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ekman. Is there any other, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on, 4.1, motion to appoint, to serve as Secretary pro tempore for this meeting only. I would like to call for a motion for nominees.
So moved. Second.
I'd like to nominate Jack Evans, please.
Second.
Make a motion to close nominations. Motion to close nominations?
Second.
Could we have a roll call on this margin?
Okay, this will be for Mr. Evans. Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, with regret and some trepidation.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Moving on to number five, Mr. Evans, you're the new elected pro secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Motion 5.1, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro School Board of Directors, held on May 18, 2016, be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, please. I'm sorry, Ms. Sereni, Melissa, please, I do that every time.
Okay. This month, our office worked on special education consultation and day-to-day student issues. We assisted with policy review, and also provided consultation on personnel issues.
Thank you, Ms. Sereni. Motion number seven, Mr. Evans?
For financial, motion 7.1, that the attached Treasury report for the month ending May 31, 2016, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 7.2, that fund disbursements in the amount of $5,354,485.05 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0.
Motion 7.3, that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year 2015, 2016, be approved.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Next motion. Sorry about correspondence. Is there any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, there's no correspondence.
Okay. Committee reports. 10.1, Mr. Evans, you're up.
Yes. Prior to the start of the Finance Committee meeting, Board members were given the opportunity to review the new text and other resource materials for the mathematics curriculum. The Finance Committee meeting was commenced at 6:02 PM. Mr. High School presented the committee with a preliminary budget index summary update, as well as preliminary financial statements current as of May 31, 2016. Mr. High School also provided a simplified budget overview for 2016-17, as well as an estimated fund balance summary and a comparison to 14 of the neighboring school districts. He also presented a comparison of tax increases over the previous five years with those same school districts. The Board reviewed and discussed proposed staffing changes, the preliminary budget proposal, and reevaluating building budgets. Mr. High School also presented a breakdown of the food service contract for the purpose of contract renewal. He also provided the summary of the proposed capital projects for 2016 and 2017. Mr. High School was really busy, as you can see. Mr. Gibson and Mr. Corinth gave a presentation on the People's Services Special Education Budget, as well as requests for funds to establish an apartment on-site, in order to improve and expand the life skills program. Mr. High School and Superintendent Riley continue to investigate what further reductions are available, while preserving programs and services to our students and community, and have asked for an additional 5% reduction across the district from the, from the five school buildings. The Finance Committee meeting was adjourned at 8:06. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. 10.2, Mr. Eckert, GBO.
After a short recess after the Finance Committee, the GBO Committee was called to order a few minutes later. On the agenda that evening was facilities presentations by Mr. Roloff, which included a free schedule for using the facilities. No action will be taken on that at this present moment. It is still up for further discussion among the Board members. There was a discussion on uniforms, there was action on that, we are going to cease the contract with the uniform company, and enter into purchasing what is there. There was a change order update, that's an action item as of this evening, that is, the change order from construction projects during last year. There was a presentation by Mr. Claus on the Athletic Department. There is a project going on this summer to upgrade the fitness center up here at the high school. There was a discussion on the pros and cons of lease and purchase. We are moving on to that as well this, this summer, there'll be a new fitness center for the high school phys ed classes, and for the sports teams to use. As Mr. Evans stated before the meeting, there was material available for curriculum and instruction. There was a presentation given by Dr. Ekman and Mr. Adable. We went into first reading for policies, which are on the agenda for the evening, and there was an up- there was an update on out-of-district students by Superintendent Riley. And that concludes the report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Just for the minutes, I was calling 10.1, 10.2. They are 9.1, 9.2. I misread them. Next, 9.3, legislative update. Mr. Burns, I'm not sure if we have an update or not.
Yeah. If you can hear me, I just wanted to comment that the basic education funding formula, or the fan funding formula, which we had talked about at previous meetings, was finally signed into law on June 2nd by the governor. And that will basically decide the distribution of the $5.5 billion in the basic education funding for the state. I had mentioned the numbers before what that meant for Interboro. I can recap at next month's meeting for the specific figures.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Next, 9.4, Mr. Chavone, Delaware County Community College.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. There was no meeting held last month, so I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Last but not least, 9.5, Delaware County IU, Mr. Harris.
We always save the best for last. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. The Delaware County Intermediate Uni Board of Directors met on June 8th, 2016, accepted a federal government's cost of living adjustment for the DCIU early head start grant, approved a renewed agreement with the Delaware County Reading Council, also approved to eliminate the positions as listed from the detention center due to decrease in enrollment and reduction in Title I funding, approved the appointment of Dr. Maria Edelberg, executive director, to a three-year term as the DCIU employee trustee for the Delaware County Public Schools Healthcare Trustees effective August 16th, 2016, approved to continue the contract with Philadelphia Suburban Associations of Plumbing and Heating and Cooling Contractors. For more news and happenings, go to WC... Oh, my word. Go to WCIU.org. Sorry. That was my handwriting. That's why I couldn't understand it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And next, number 10, presentation.
When to order, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Eckert. I know it's in the back of the agenda, but I would like to give the date of the next GBO Finance Committee. I failed to do that. It will be on Wednesday, June 6th, instead of the Tuesday night. It will be July. I'm sorry, we're already in June. July 6th, Wednesday, in the Prospect Park Library. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Moving on to number 10, the presentation for the general fund budget. If we could take a seat down for the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. If you could just give us one minute here. Tonight, we are here to present our proposed budget for the 2016, 2017 school year. This is something that we have been working on for a number of months. We've put many hours in working with our directors, our administrators, and our Board of School Directors to come up with what we believe is a fiscally responsible budget this evening. So, with that being said, we will move ahead with the presentation, and if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer those after the meeting. The first two slides are just a visual for you to see what our anticipated expenditures and revenue is for the 16, '17 school year. As you came in this evening, we did have a budget at a glance available for you with information concerning the budget. Those two graphs are the same that you see here on the PowerPoint presentation, and they are reflected in the information here on this revenue source piece slide. For this, over the course of the 15, '16, and '16, '17 school year, you will see that we will have an increase in our taxes, as there is, we are making a proposal for a 2.9 tax increase, which is generating $1,082,177. As far as our real estate taxes and our delinquency, we saw a decrease in that, as we have about a 95.5% increase, or what we collect on, excuse me, collection rate on our taxes, which is good for us. So, you will see that there we're seeing a decline in the delinquent taxes that we are not collecting. As far as parking lot taxes, we're seeing about a $17,000 increase. Usually, when gas prices are down and the economy is good, we'll see more people traveling. So, we're good to see that we're collecting, generating some additional revenue through the parking lot. Our state revenue, our basic education subsidy, we're seeing an increase in that. For a number of years, the governor had in place a Ready to Learn grant, and as of now, that figure or that grant, that amount of money has been put into the basic education funding. So, the Ready to Learn grant has gone away, and that money has been absorbed into the basic education subsidy. We have certain criteria that we need to follow on how we use that money, and that comes through the Curriculum and Instruction Office. Our rental and sinking fund subsidy, that's the money we receive for our debt service, a small increase from the state revenue. And we're seeing about a $73,000 increase in our special education subsidy, which does help us somewhat. As far as federal revenue, our Title I program, we're seeing, I would call it, a substantial increase. We usually don't see these kind of increases with our Title I money. Usually, there's somewhat of a decrease. So, we're happy to see that we are having a $72,000 increase. And that money will be going towards supporting our Title I power professionals for the community schools. Our Keystone II Opportunities Grant, a small decline in that. This is the last year of the grant. So, as of the 17, this year, 16, '17 school year that we're moving into, this will be the last year for the five years of the Keystone Grant. And for Title II, that's pretty much status quo. For our reductions and increases to our major expenditures, in January, we started off with about a $4.1 million deficit, and from January to June, we were able to reduce that deficit to approximately $938,000. Our increases to our expenditures that we will see are, of course, our contractual obligations for all employees as far as salaries. Our healthcare benefits, we're seeing an increase of almost 11%. We have our PISers contribution. This year, it's about, it's at 30%. And we do receive some subsidy money from the state to offset what the district does put towards PISers. And we are seeing our debt service. We have a capital projects, which is the HVAC project that's taking place at the kindergarten and the administration building. Our reductions to help offset that deficit, we have a reduction in staffing, and that saves on our side of salary and benefits. We have a reduction in special education costs, our departmental budgets, our school budgets, and we do have energy savings from the projects that the district has completed over the past few years. The board is proposing a 2.9 tax increase, which will generate a little bit over $1,000,000 in revenue. For a house that is assessed at approximately $90,000, your taxes will increase by about $89. And as you can see, based on the assessment of your property, that will determine what your increase is for the 16, '17 year. Some of our projects that we'll be undertaking in the area of curriculum and instruction for the 16, '17 school year, we will be adding in a three-year subscription for our GoMath program for students in grade 1 to 5. We will be offering professional development in K-12 mathematics, algebra textbooks, pre-calculus textbooks, science standard, high school biology program, lots of curriculum writing. The district sets aside about 360 hours for curriculum writing over the summer, so there's a variety of writing that will be taking place this summer, and that is on for approval as well for this meeting. We also are expanding our Naviance program into the middle school, and we are purchasing a six-year subscription for our Journeys program for grades K to 2, and that is our consumable books for our reading program. As far as facilities, we will be completing a feasibility study of the entire district, and that's being paid for through district funds, the general fund. Tinicum is receiving a new playground, which is being paid for through the airport settlement agreement, and that's in the committed funds. The Administrative Kindergarten Academy is under, we're in the midst of a HVAC upgrade replacement. That's being paid for through bonds. And we do have capital project funds that we're using to refinish the gym floor, our weight room, and our training room for our students. And we are adding in a life skills apartment program, and that's also being paid for through the capital project fund. Technology, we are expanding our program to incorporate Google certification for our teachers this year, as well as our tech U that we offered last year. We are adding Cubletson, which are modular robotics that'll be offered through kindergarten and first grade and at the high school level. We are adding some additional switches for network closets at the high school and the kindergarten academy, additional wireless access points, because we are increasing our technology that we're paying through KTO, which I'll show in an upcoming slide. And we are replacing 25 projectors at the high school, as well as our student information system for Assessment Builder and IEP Plus, which is how we track our students that have individualized education plans. The Keystone II Opportunity Grant, after year five, the total grant will have brought in approximately $3.2 million in funds to the district. This has pretty much been the foundation of our literacy program, and that has really enhanced what we are offering to our students. So, we've added technology through iPad carts, Chromebooks, training through our, for our high school teachers, student response systems, leveled literacy intervention program at the high school, social studies. As you can see, the list is quite extensive. So, we have really utilized those funds to support many of our programs here. So, we'll be out looking for other grants, and hopefully, they'll be available at the federal level so that we can continue to provide these types of programs. Hopefully, the government, PDE, will be offering grants for us to apply. Some of our program changes for the upcoming school year, we are moving to an instructional technology coach model. I've been working a lot with Mrs. Hagerty on this, and our teachers who will be in these positions, I think it's exciting for us as we really encourage and get our computer teachers into the classroom and working with these resources that are available to students throughout their day. We are moving to district-wide library media specialists. We are, we will have one district-wide RTI coordinator who will be moving around through the schools, supporting our students. We also have Math Power Professionals, and they will be working in conjunction with our district-wide RTI coordinator. We are going to be offering an exploratory language program. Eighth grade, excuse me, eighth grade will be receiving German, French, and Latin, and sixth and seventh grade will be receiving Spanish, and we're even able to offer some Spanish to our kindergarten students. So, we're very excited about this program, as our students in middle school have never had an opportunity to learn a language and be exposed to a language. So, we're happy to be able to offer this. And we are putting in place a new life skills apartment travel program that will be at the high school. So, we're excited also to have that program as well. So, that is it for our budget presentation. Mr. High School and I will be available after the meeting to answer any questions that you have. We're around all summer, and we look forward to, you know, accomplishing a lot and being back here in September. We know it's all going to go very quickly. So, thank you very much, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Riley and Mr. High School for that presentation. I'm sure it's obvious, Mr. Burns is participating in the meeting. One telephone call in. I just wanted to make an announcement so everyone doesn't know. Moving on to number 11, Mr. Evans?
Motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, with proposed expenditures of $65,729,542, requiring an increase of .9841 mils over the current millage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 2.9% for a new total millage rate of 34.9203 mils.
Second.
This motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah. I just heard the budget proposal that was given and presented to everybody, and I want to say that I think it was very presumptuous that there was, that we're going to have a tax increase, that we're going to have a budget increase, that we're going to have motions 18.9 and 18.10 for capital improvements. None of those things were voted on. And frankly, I think that it was inappropriate to have a presentation in that manner, because all of those things require board approval, and the board hasn't acted yet. And I think there needs to be a note of that for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any other questions or comments? Could we have a roll call on this, Ms. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle? Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
No.
Mrs. De Batista?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
No.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries five to four. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent... Sorry. Motion on the recommendation of the superintendent, in accordance with Section 1124 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code of 1949 as amended, in order to promote a more effective and efficient educational system and/or to conform with standards of reorganization, to approve the alteration, contrailment of the educational program, to approve the filing actions effective of the close of the 2015, 2016... effective, the close of the 2015-2016 school term as it relates to IEA staffing. Number one, the elimination of 1.5 librarians. Number two, the elimination of 1.5 computer teachers. And number three, the elimination of 2.5 RTI teachers.
Second. This motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, could we have a roll call on this, Ms. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
No.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries six, three. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion that the following personnel actions be approved, items 13.1 to 13.28, starting on page three and ending on page eight.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero.
No, it was nine to, it was eight to one.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Burns.
That's okay.
I'm just looking what that all includes, I'm a no for that, too.
That's fine.
Motion carries seven to two. Thank you. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Under retirements, motion 14.1 with regret, please accept the following retirements. Mary Salucci, guidance counselor, with 23 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement under the terms of the Early Retirement Incentive Program effective June 17, 2016, under the terms and conditions set forth in the current agreement with the Interboro Education Association. Margaret Claire, instructional assistant, with 18 years of service to the district, be approved for effective June 16, 2016. Patricia Clorin, instructional assistant, with 13 years of service to the district, be approved for effective June 16, 2016. John Rowe, guidance counselor, with 11 years of service to the district, be approved effective June 17, 2016. And Patricia Temple, bus monitor, with nine years of service to the district, be approved effective June 16, 2016.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Mr. Siobhan?
I just want to congratulate all of the employees on their retirement and wish them the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Siobhan. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Number 15, Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion that the following items be approved, items 15.1 to 15.15, pages nine through 12.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries nine, zero.
Office of Special Education Pupil Services, motion 16, starting with 16.1, that the following items be approved, 16.1 through 16.7, pages 12 and 13.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Number 17, Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, starting with item 17.1 through 17.7, pages 13 and 14.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to one. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved, 18.1 through 18.10, pages 14 and 15.
I'll second that. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Mr. Siobhan?
On 18.10, I just, the apartment that is going to be built in the high school, I just want to say that I really support this, that we are going to have the opportunity to bring a lot of our life skills students that are outside of the district, bring them back in so that they are in the surrounding of the Interboro High School, because like we saw last week at the graduation, how proud these students are to be a Buck and be in Interboro. I want all students in the Interboro community to be able to have that opportunity. So I fully support 18.10 in that respect.
Thank you, Mr. Siobhan. Any other comments?
Comment.
Mr. Evans?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Harris for taking it upon himself to explore other avenues for discounts on the need of appliances. I think that shows creativity, initiative, and a willingness to try and reduce our costs, so I wanted to thank him for that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you for thanking me.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, one. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, items 19.1 through 19.5, pages 15 and 16.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
He opposed? Mr. Burns, could you repeat your?
I was a yes.
You were a yes. Okay, motion carries nine, zero. Thank you. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20, that the Board of School Directors approve the attached athletic trainer agreement between Interboro School District and the Health Access Network for a term of three years at a cost of $32,000 per year to be paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 21, that the Board of School Directors approve the attached sports medicine agreement between Interboro School District and the Health Access Network for a term of three years at a cost of $21,289.60 per year to be paid from district funds.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 22, that the Board of School Directors approve Mr. Edward Harris to serve as member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019.
Sorry, second. I'd second that, yes. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Mr. Siobhan?
I just want to thank Mr. Harris for all of his hard work on the DCIU board and all the information that he brings back to us, so thank you. I fully support this.
Thank you, Mr. Siobhan. Any other comments?
Comment.
Ms. De Batista?
Yes, I just, I also wanted to thank Mr. Harris for his time, that he has already served on the IU board and, you know, will continue to serve, you know, should this pass. But I know that I had served on this board as well, and it's a lot of work and time that just to serve on two boards is, you know, is very admirable, so thank you for your continued service on both of these boards.
Stop, you're choking me up. Any other comments? Hearing none, could we have a roll call on this, Ms. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah, why not?
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Comment? Mr.?
I just want to thank you for all your support. I think that Mr. Burns and I, as representatives to the IU for our different committees, have made a name for Interboro, we're known. Interboro's getting a very good name for themselves on the IU. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 23, that the Board of School Directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Interboro School District and SEIU Local 32BJ for the time period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2021.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, could we have a roll call on this, Ms. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 24, that the Board of School Directors approve the attached memorandum of understanding with the Interboro Education Association, district-wide curriculum-related assignments.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this as well?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 25, that the Board of School Directors approve the following textbook adoptions for the 2016-2017 school year, recalculation with limits, third edition, Explorations in Core Math, Algebra I, and Go Math 2015-C Multi-Volumen.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, could we have a roll call on this, Ms. Caldwell?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Siobhan?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 26, that the Board of School Directors approve the first readings of the following policies in the categories of programs, operations, and community.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 27, that the Board of School Directors approve the revision of the following policy in the categories of pupils and properties.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 28, that the Board of School Directors approve the second readings of the following policies in the categories of local board procedures, finance, and operations.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine, zero. Okay, is there any old business? Is there any new business? Hearing none, I will turn to serve it through our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I would like to, of course, congratulate the class of 2016. Last week was graduation, and it was a wonderful event. The place was packed, we heard some great speeches by our students, and, you know, it was just a great evening for all. So I would also like to thank the many organizations and individual people who provided scholarships to our students this year. We awarded over $50,000 in individuals, in individual awards and scholarships to our students. We had contributors from our former teachers, administrators, our community members, our bargaining unit associations, we had the IEA, IEP-A, our local businesses, just a number of organizations. And, you know, it's great to see all of our kids be in the audience and walk up and receive these awards, and I know that they value what they put into it, and to be able to take that scholarship money and awards and use it towards their future and their career, whatever they might do, they're very appreciative of. So thank you to all those who provided scholarship money for our kids, it's very much appreciated. This year, we have our Summer Book Challenge taking place in conjunction with our local libraries. You can check it out on the website, and if you get a log and complete it, take a picture, tweet it out at Get Caught Reading ISD. We've already had some people who have posted pictures of themselves reading from a variety of locations, so we're hoping to keep that going all summer. Also, registration is taking place, residency verification. If you are entering into first, sixth, or ninth grade, you need to come in and provide proof of residency. There's information on the website, along with the hours that the registration open is, the registration office is open. And on behalf of the administration, I'd like to wish everyone a wonderful summer, and we'll see you back here in a few short weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Riley. Any board members have any comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Phelps.
Mr. Siobhan?
I want to also congratulate the class of 2016. I wish them the best in their career, if they're going to college. I also want to thank State Senator McGarrigal for the Kid Expo that was held here at Interboro a few weekends ago. It was a great event, a lot of families came. They had the Franklin Institute was here, they had blow-ups outside, the Army was here as well. It was a great event, and I just want to thank Senator McGarrigal. Have a good summer.
Thank you, Mr. Siobhan. Any other comments? Myself, I would like to thank the 32BJ for working out their contract in a timely manner. They were very organized, to the point, very, very nice to work with. We do appreciate all they do to keep the buildings up to par. I also would like to thank Ms. Riley and Mr. High School for the work that they did on the budget, getting it done. It was a lot of endless nights, I'm sure. I know both of them put a lot of time and effort into this. Is there any other comments? Hearing none, on Wednesday, July 6, 2016, a finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 6:00 PM in the library of Prospect Park School. Just so you know, that is Wednesday, July 6, because normally it is Tuesday, so. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the library of the Prospect Park School on Tuesday, July 19, 2016, at 6:30 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, July 20, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.